Everyone, if you would just take a moment to silence your cellphones if needed. Oh, I see many people doing that. Very good. And then if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to your republic, with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I just wanted to mention that we've recently had some experiences
with members of the public attempting to make points of order, and I have been reminded that points of order may only be made from members of the body, members of city councils. So we will observe those rules. In addition, the public comment portion of any agenda item will be for the public, obviously, to make comment, but not a back-and-forth dialogue between the commenter and members of city councils. So that would help us in the flow of this meeting in an orderly fashion, and I thank you in helping us with that process. All right. We have one item under Proclamations that I'm going to call on Kathy Ball. Kathy, you're going to need to remind me of your current title. You are Assistant City Mayor.
I am Executive Director of Planning and Multimodal Transportation. Mayor and members of city council, thank you. This is exciting for us. I want to take just a moment before I do two introductions just to say that we are very fortunate to have a great professional organization, an American Public Works Association in the state of North Carolina that is very supportive of doing education. We just had our annual meeting in June, and at that meeting there are recognitions and scholarship awards that are made. So we have two of the officials, the leadership from the American Public Works Association, the North Carolina chapter here today, to make those proclam-- to give those awards to city staff members for their contribution to the APWA and their furthering their education. I'm going to introduce both of them, and so when they get done, they can just come up and finish up. The first one is Russell Byrd. Russell Byrd is currently the President of the North Carolina Chapter of the American Public Works Association. He's been a member of APWA for 11 years. He is the current member and previous Chair of the Awards Committee. He represents the chapter with National Association of the Rules and Bylaws, and he also serves as the primary connection with the League of Municipalities on all issues associated with APA. So Russell will make the first recognition for the President's Award. The second one is Keith Pugh. Keith is the Director of Engineering Services with the City of High Point. He's been a member of American Public Works Association for 18 years. He is the past President-- he was President in 2011. He currently serves as chapter chair on the Awards Committee, so he will make the scholarship award to one of our city employees. And he is also serves as a representative with the League of Municipalities coordinating our efforts. So I will turn it over to Russell, who will make the announcement, and then he will turn it over to Keith. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Mayor Manheimer and members of the council, it's a pleasure and an honor to be here tonight to again recognize one of your own for some outstanding services. Probably will not come to a great-- as a great deal of surprise when I call this person out. To allay any of the suspense, Kathy Willis is a true professional in every sense of the word, and I can say that with confidence. She began her stellar service to the North Carolina chapter of APWA as its secretary in 2008. She handles many, and I do mean many, tasks simultaneously and with apparent ease, always with a smile. Well, almost unless you forget a submittal deadline for your report or you start a side card conversation during a board meeting, you may get a frown then. She handles our agendas, our minutes, our endless reports, our schedules, our contracts, and so much more, but obviously with a great deal of dedication. She's always prepared, always organized, and most importantly, always willing to pitch in and help whenever asked to, and more times than not, just to handle it without being asked. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the City of Asheville, particularly Greg Schuler and Kathy Ball, for their willingness to allow Kathy to participate in APWA chapter board meetings and other conferences and events, and for sharing her time and talents, her tremendous talents, with the chapter. I would be remiss if I didn't also take this time to thank her husband, Lyle, for sharing Kathy's personal time with us. I can only imagine the volume of work she does nights and weekends on our behalf. Without Kathy's valuable-- no, that invaluable contributions, our chapter would not and could not be one of the finest in the association. If there is anyone who deserves to be recognized for her outstanding contributions to the chapter, it would be Kathy. That is why I was proud and thrilled to present her and two other members of the board. With the 2014 President's Award, it should be noted that she has received this honor on two other occasions, which speaks to her ongoing dedication and excellence, outstanding service to the chapter. It is impossible for me to adequately thank her for all she has done for our chapter. Please join me, Chapter Awards Chair, Mr. Pugh, in this most deserved recognition of a true public servant, Ms. Kathy Willis. The North Carolina chapter of the American Public Works Association proudly presents President's Award, Kathy Willis, to recognize her extraordinary efforts during the year that she has contributed successfully to the chapter in 2014. And before I turn the podium back over to Mr. Pugh for some further recognition, Ms. Willis is the absolute best. We agree.
Well, and as Russell stated, thank you once again for allowing us to come here this evening to recognize a couple of folks. As part of the fun part of what we do, not only do we recognize these people during our annual meeting, but we love to come to their home turf and recognize them in front of either their elected boards or in front of their peers and their employees. I'm actually here tonight wearing two hats. I'll wear the hat of our Scholarship Committee, and I'll wear the hat of our Awards Committee as well, because I've actually got two folks that I'd like to recognize in front of you this evening. The APWA North Carolina chapter has four different scholarships that we award every year. Three of those go to full-time students in some sort of field that relates to public works, and the other goes to a city employee who is looking to improve their skills so that they can improve their chances at a better career in public works. And this year, our Employee Scholarship went to Mr. Lee Morrison. And Lee has been an employee of the City of Asheville since 2006. He's been attending classes to help him understand fully what is necessary to provide quality service to the citizens of Asheville. In addition to his schoolwork and his position as a construction inspector, Lee is a lieutenant at the Volunteer Fire Department and an Eagle Scout. He's only one class short right now of having his Advanced Certificate as a North Carolina Roads Scholar, which is a program offered through the Institute of Transportation Research and Education at North Carolina State. And he is certified in many aspects of his job, and he's a valued team member with the City of Asheville. So, if you will, and Lee received his check for this scholarship during our annual meeting, so I don't have another check for Lee, but I do want to recognize him. So, Lee, if you would. Now I get to put on my Awards Committee hat for one that is probably not expected this evening, but one that I'm sure is now expected by an individual in the audience. The North Carolina chapter also recognizes an individual who throughout the year is not a member of our association, but helps the leadership of our association succeed. And we have one of those individuals here with us tonight. And this is-- this award is named after Ms. Jean Seals, who for years worked behind the scenes to support her husband, Mr. Robert Seals, and his endeavors with our association. And I'm not going to go through a lot of embarrassing things like we did talking about him during our annual conference, but suffice to say that this individual embodies the ideals of that person working behind the scenes to help those people in leadership positions to succeed. And without further ado, I would like to recognize one of your retired City of Asheville employees, Mr. Lyle Willis, who was named with this award. We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Kathy, does that wrap up that portion? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to the Consent Agenda. I am not aware of any items that need to be pulled out to be voted on separately. If there's anyone who has an item that would like-- they would like to be pulled out, now is the time, or if there's a question.
Mayor, I'd like to speak a moment about Item G. It's not really pulling it from the agenda. I just think that it's important to note that we are moving ahead with the contract, the full-time contract to do the downtown cleanliness effort and initiative that we worked so hard to get, and I think it'll be-- it's been good with the interim group because there has been pressure washing and cleaning downtown that needed to be done, but I think now that this contract is getting ready to go into effect, that it will be even better, and I think it would be also helpful if we could perhaps get a copy of the-- council could receive a copy of the requirements that the company is actually going to do, because I know we'll be questioned about what their frequency of cleaning will be, but I think that it really speaks volumes to the fact that we listened to a group of citizens who wanted to form a business improvement district, and we've actually contributed a larger amount of money than if that had happened to do on our side what should be done. So I think that I'm excited about the possibilities of a cleaner downtown.
Great. And I think I see Mr. Featherson. You're writing down-- I know Mr. Jackson is not here right now, but the request for a little more detail about the contract.
Yes, and I would speak to that just a little bit, just quickly. We are going to have something up on the website so that folks can look at the website and see what areas have been cleaned, along with a checklist of the things that the contractor will be doing. The other thing we're going to do is ask the contractor to wear some type of clothing that identifies themselves as being the city's cleaning contractor, so that folks are more aware that that is taking place.
Great.
Thank you.
It's a great step forward, and I really am really appreciative that we have that.
Again, another agenda item that I don't want to pull, but I'd like to comment on Consent Agenda C regarding a contract for groundskeeping in the east part of the city. We aren't going to do it now, but I hope as we go forward, we can make it clear to our-- the people who do landscaping and all, that we-- that I hope will agree as a council to exclude Roundup, that is glyphosate, from our chemical arsenal in the city, as well as the neonicotinoid pesticides, which are responsible apparently for killing off honeybees across the country. Being that we're the first bee city in the country, I think that banning those pesticides, which are killing honeybees, would be a good idea. And so I'd hope to see that in future contracts at least concerning our groundskeeping.
If I could comment on that as well, I'd agree with Councilman Bothwell about having-- there's a lot of other things that we can be using that won't be harmful. And further, to make sure that whoever we're contracting with is aware of the city's food action plan and is incorporating those edibles into their landscaping plans.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Do I have a motion?
Would you approve the Consent Agenda?
Second.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak on the motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Seeing none? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We've approved the Consent Agenda. We have two presentations tonight. The first, we will hear from Chief Anderson regarding the Asheville Police Department's Strategic Plan 2014-2017. Welcome, Chief Anderson.
Members of city council, this is a presentation of the Asheville Police Department's Strategic Operations Plan for 2014 through 2017. And just to give you a little bit of background, I think we all know that from a historical perspective, there's always been some concerns, both internally and externally, surrounding the Asheville Police Department. In 2013, the city manager directed development of a three-year strategic operations plan, and in September of 2013, Dolan Consultants, which consists of retired Police Chief Harry Dolan from the City of Raleigh, and also Willie Williams from the City of Wilson, retired Chief of Police, and several of their partners to come in and work with us on the development of the three-year plan. As part of the process, we wanted to make sure that there was direct and candid feedback from our employees, from community members, and law enforcement partners around Buncombe County. The areas that we focused on was departmental strengths and areas for development. Out of that process, there were six planning areas that were identified: recruitment and retention, leadership, organizational structure, equipment and technology, and on the community side, community quality of life, and agency outreach and communications. And what I'd like to do is just go through each one of those areas briefly, and just kind of give you an overview of the areas that we're looking at as part of the plan. In recruitment and retention, which was the first planning area, the goal is to enhance recruitment and retention. We want to make sure that we're looking at all possibilities of not only recruiting the best qualified applicants, but retaining them as well. One of the issues that was identified was compensation and incentive plans. I think we all are aware that that's something the city is looking at throughout the city, holistically through the city, so that's an area that was identified. And we want to make sure that we not only are recruiting a diverse workforce, but we want to make sure that it also is representative of the community. So on the recruitment and retention, that's the areas that we looked at. On the leadership, the goal is to create an environment that promotes fairness, consistency, and accountability, and the second goal is to provide employees with current and high-quality training, and provide equity in career development and opportunities. We want to make sure we're looking at and reviewing our promotional and disciplinary process to ensure that it's equitable and fair across the board. We also want to make sure that we have open lines of communication, not only from the chief's office, but throughout the organization, from the top to the bottom, and from the bottom to the top. And we also want to make sure that we're providing quality leadership, management, and supervisory training for all of our personnel across the board. We think that this will help instill and address the issue of leadership within the organization. On the organizational structure, the goal is to allocate staff to ensure the goals of the Asheville Police Department are met in an efficient manner, and goal two, to improve APD's reaction to crime. We're basically going to look at how we allocate all of our personnel throughout the city to make sure that we're doing it in an efficient manner. That includes looking at our district boundaries and our beat boundaries based on crime analysis information to ensure that our workforce is spread out equally, and also reviewing our schedules and our workload to also ensure that that's being done in an efficient manner, and also expanding and looking at our community policing opportunities that again, ensuring that we're providing the best opportunities we can to our citizens. Equipment and technology, the goal is to ensure the ability to upgrade and/or replace equipment and technology as needed in the future, and goal two is to maintain a professional, safe, and operable fleet of department vehicles. We just want to make sure that across the board, we're-- we are providing our employees with the best technology and stand state-of-the-art as much as possible. We want to make sure that our fleet is up to date and is operating in a safe manner, and I think city council has addressed that in the current budget for future years. And we're also looking at researching and possibly expanding our take-home vehicle fleet program. This also was identified under recruitment and retention, when we are looking at possibly losing officers to other agencies that have such operations as that. We also want to make sure that our crime analysis equipment is all up to date and state-of-the-art as well, and that we're obtaining the best information we can to identify and address crime issues in our community. Under community, community quality of life is a planning area, and the goal is committed partnerships with the community to reduce crime and improve the quality of life. And one of the areas that we're looking at there is actually doing surveys in the different neighborhoods as to their perception of crime, whether they feel are some of the issues in the different neighborhoods that they are facing. And we think that this is a primary way of addressing some of the individual crime issues in different communities. We also want to partner with CPAC, the Neighborhood Advisory Committee, the Asheville-Buncombe County Community Relations Council, to also move out into community and get input as far as some of the community concerns and things that might be occurring. And we want to make sure that it doesn't just end here with this plan, but that we continue to have open dialogue with follow-up meetings in the community to make sure we're getting valuable information from the community. We also want to make sure we're creating a responsive and diversity-friendly environment within the Asheville Police Department. We want to make sure that across the board, our officers are trained and understand the different cultures and different activities that go on in the community, and that we are a very balanced police department. And finally, the last planning area is agency outreach and communication, and the goal is to ensure that the community is informed in a timely manner about current events, programs, and news. And basically, this is working with the DAWS Office, the Office of Public Engagement, ensuring that we have a group of employees that can serve as part of our public information office within the police department, and this is working in conjunction with the city's Office of Public Engagement. We want to ensure that we're providing timely and accurate information to the community, and using various tools to address that through social media, through the mainstream media, but making sure that we have methods in place that we're getting information out to the public. The Asheville Police Department does a great job in the community, but I think one of the things that we need to do a better job is marketing ourselves and making sure we're getting accurate information out to the public, and this particular planning area will address As you know, this is a three-year strategic operations plan, and in reviewing the plan, you'll notice that each goal, objective, and action items have specific time markers and also performance measures for us to evaluate the plan and to keep it current. There are six team leaders that are responsible for their planning areas, and if they don't mind, I'll just ask them to stand up real quick. I think they're all here. These are all part of the strategic planning areas, and each one of them is responsible for an area of the plan. Thanks, guys. And I can't stress the more than the fact that this is a living document. It's something that we will continuously evaluate and revise as needed. It's something that we want to keep the community informed of, as well as our employees. But quite frankly, we look at this as a roadmap for us to operate and to take us into the future to address any issues, areas of concern that we might have had, not only internally, but externally as well. And with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
It's great work. I was really impressed by a lot of your objectives, tie right into what council has identified as strategic objectives. But I-- just a couple things I'd ask that we definitely consider is, I would like to see us be really creative in using volunteers. You know, I'm hearing out in the community that volunteers would be interested in helping with speed control, parking violations, those kind of things. I realize that that's probably something that we're not used to doing, but I would just ask you to be as creative as possible with using our community folks out there. And then I know, and also just stressing, coordinating with the other departments within the city. You know, information technology has been acknowledged as one of our-- one of the great strengths of the city, so just being aware of not recreating the wheel and depending on the rest of-- the rest of the city so that you can have more money. So, but thanks. I think it's great work.
In the area of volunteers, we do have a pretty active volunteer force, but in the plan itself, there is specific action items geared toward expanding our volunteer program, so that's definitely one of the areas that we're going to look at. And we've had a lot of conversations with DAWS, her office, to make sure that we are interacting and sharing information in the development of the PIO information.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
A couple of comments. I was really struck at how thorough this is, and having these six very different project areas. I think we're going to come out with a strengthened organization, with officers that are-- feel more valued and are more valued, and ultimately make a safer city through this thing that you're undertaking, and thanks to all the command staff who are willing to take these pieces on and shepherd them through. There are a couple of pieces I just wanted to put out there as things that I'll be interested in learning more about going forward, and one is around the predictive policing approach, and I understand that the plan calls for research in that area, and that's something I hope that the Public Safety Committee can have a pretty good, close look at. It's something that was new to me, and there are a lot of pieces there I'd like to know more about. And then secondly, I didn't see it specifically mentioned in the plan, but I was curious about ongoing officer training in regards to being essentially first-line mental health responders as our mental health system continues to go through its travails. I know that so many of the men and women on the force are the first contact for a lot of folks who are in trouble because they haven't been able to get the aid that they need. I was wondering if you could speak to that for a moment.
We are continually looking at mental health training within the-- in the police department. We have several officers who are trained, probably one-third of our department is trained in critical incidents involving the mentally challenged, but we're also looking at expanding that throughout the department. What we'd like to see is all of our officers training that as how do you respond with to individuals that are suffering from some of these challenges, so that is something that we're that we're looking at.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Before the chief leaves, just as an aside, Public Safety Committee, we were able to get this and actually go through it yesterday as a group, and we also, at the same time, received an update on the downtown enhancement plan. And I think seeing some members of our downtown business community in the audience this evening, I think it's important to note that we're having very positive results from that downtown enhancement plan. Our crime statistics, the violent crimes are, in some instances, down and in other instances, up, but it's kind of holding its own in some places, but I think that the awareness of the amount of activity downtown from panhandling, transient visitors to the city that are here, kind of on the street with a dog and a rope, are creating probably the most- a little more nuisance than they normally do. I'm not sure whether it's just the increased quantity, but the department's very aware of it, and the downtown unit is very responsive to calls for service. So, I'd like to say that if you have the opportunity and people approach you about panhandling and those things that are not desirable in the downtown, if you will tell them to call the non-emergency number, we will have a rapid response of an officer to get there, and you don't have to stay around and wait until the officer comes, but you can make the officer aware that there is this issue going on, and they are being much more responsive to that type situation now. And I think that the presence of our downtown unit to the business community is growing all the time, and we have opportunities, we have some shortages on the force, but we beef that up with an augment from other areas, so we have a great presence on the street right at the moment and will continue to do that. So, I appreciate that, chief, that you've reacted to those concerns of the citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, this crisis intervention training, I couldn't think of it there for a minute, but yes, we're focusing on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have a legislative update from Paul Featherson, whose title is not as complicated. It's just Assistant City Manager, right? Or is- am I wrong?
Correct.
That's right. This is your fifth or fourth?
I've lost count.
Oh, please, please.
We just want to provide you with an update regarding the legislator- legislative activity since our last update to you on June 24th. Not much has happened in the past two weeks. A lot- much of the focus has been on the budget, and the most of the debate surrounds the spending on education and Medicaid at the global level. There was not many meetings last week. I think the House is not meeting much, hasn't met much in the last few weeks. The Senate is meeting more, and what we're identifying for you tonight is some bills that we believe are worthy of watching, that you're getting a lot of email traffic on. One of them is House Bill 1224, it's local sales tax for education. It sets a cap on county local option sales tax, two and a half percent. I believe Bunkham County is at 2.25 right now, and allows any increase or any movement within that to be for transit or for education. The Senate finances debating this right now, actually. So, that's one of the bills to watch. I don't know if there's any questions, or Robin, if you have anything else to add.
No comments, thank you.
Obviously, if you can get a ride, you don't need an education, right?
So, just to understand that, you can choose only one of the two, transportation or education, to fund with up to 0.5%. Is that as of wherever you are right now, or it was a little unclear to me?
You know, it's a great question. Jack just sent a spreadsheet that actually shows that there's a few options. So, for Bunkham County, it looks as though there's a few options for the additional quarter percent, that it could be a, I'm sorry, yeah, for a quarter percent, that half of that quarter could be for both education and transit, or all of it could be one for the other.
But given where Bunkham County's sales tax is at right now, that would be our cap?
Yes.
Until something was sunsetted or whatever. And I understand there are some counties that would not be, and we're talking about situations where there is a referendum voted on by the voters to add a sales, local sales tax option.
Correct. So, the next bill that we are watching is temporary health structures. This is one that just came to our attention again today. It's something that apparently has been proposed in past years and that the city has watched and opposed, but this would enable the placement of trailer-like structures in residential areas for mentally or physically disabled individuals and for the care of them, and so it would remove them from zoning control of the city, and it would encourage the structures in single-family neighborhoods. Enforcement for the city would be quite challenging in determining who qualifies for the housing and when the use ceases. So, this is something that Jack is watching pretty closely and staff is watching. And then, the next one is the challenges to state laws bill. This would create a three-judge panel to hear all challenges of the validity of state laws, and it would place a stay on all matters until the challenge on the constitutional outcome challenge is ruled upon and until the appeal rights are exhausted. So, this is one that we continue to watch.
So, a judge could rule against the legislature of the state, and it wouldn't matter that the judge had ruled, whatever they said would go forward despite the court's ruling until they had gone through every possible appeal?
That is our belief, yes.
So, that could be a period of years that the- we would take place even if it were deemed unconstitutional by a judge?
Potentially. So, if there's a ruling, if a judge rules on a case as, you know, as the city's encountering right now, if that were the- if this law were in place, that means that the city- that that ruling has no effect, and that the original law would be in effect until all appeals are exhausted.
So, for example, under the Act to Seize the City's Water System, the judge immediately issued a stay, and under this concept, a three-judge panel would hear it because it was a constitutional challenge, and if the judge were to issue a stay, that stay would be stayed. So, the law would go into effect, the system would have transferred, and that would have been the case until the final appeal right had been exhausted. So, in our case, probably the North Carolina Court of Appeals in that situation. And this- this bill is extremely troubling. I mean, just to state the obvious.
I think that there was- it went- it picked up in the- it's either in the House or the Senate now, I think, in a committee, is that correct?
It might be sitting.
That it might stay, and we're hoping for some time.
Yeah, I believe it is a committee, but as you know, anything can happen at the end of a session.
Is it self-referential, meaning if a judge finds this unconstitutional, that it would still be in effect?
Right. Good question.
Yeah.
Sort of circular, huh?
So, other bills that we are monitoring are the registration required for mopeds. So, there's a disagreement between the House and the Senate right now over whether or not insurance is required. The Senate is requiring insurance, it's going back to the House to see if it will concur. The important component for the city of Asheville is the registration, which is in the bill. The omnibus justice amendments, this includes graffiti vandalism, enhances the penalties for it. This has been in the Senate Rules Committee for three weeks after the House added major criminal portions, and it appears dead unless it becomes part of a bill taken up. The next one is the one that we've reported on many times, the amendment to environmental laws. It repeals the moratorium on local environmental ordinances, and it does not currently include tree ordinance language. We do not anticipate that trees will move forward through this session. The coal ash action plan, the Senate did not accept the House changes, and it's headed to conferees. The House weakened the Senate bill, and it's unlikely the Senate will go along with something weaker than what it proposed, and the Senate version is what this- what aligns with what the city's interests are. Another topic that's been of interest to the city is zoning design and aesthetic controls. It would restrict the local government's ability to institute design and aesthetic controls on one and two-family dwellings. It's contained actually in two separate bills. It doesn't appear as though either of those bills will move forward, but the home builders is continuing to push for it. S-734, this is a regulatory reform act, as outlined on the slide, it encompasses a number of provisions, and it is currently in the Ways and Means Committee, which indicates that it is likely going to die there. And then, just a listing of bills that have now become law. The ETJ, that clarifies language on the planning and zoning authority inside the city limits and repeals the CRA. The Bent Creek exempted Asheville and Henderson County from compliance with a certain agreement made between them regarding Bent Creek property. And the airport authority, it creates an authority that includes representation by one member of the Asheville City Council, one member of the Henderson County Commission, and one member of the Bunkham County Commission. And then, of course, the omnibus tax law changes, which was PLT reform, and then the Energy Modernization Act and fracking all became law. So, that is the report we have for you. Alex, Robin, Jack, and I keep track of everything, it's a team effort, and that's what we have for you tonight.
Thank you, and you all are doing a great job keeping track of it. It's been changing every several minutes.
Yeah.
It seems like. No one had any other questions? All right, our public hearing portion of tonight's meeting has been dramatically slimmed down. I do need a motion to continue item A to October 14th, 2014. This was a public hearing to consider the amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance regarding residential development than city standards in certain commercial zoning districts. Do I have a motion to continue?
Still move, second.
All right, motion and second. Anyone wishing to comment on the motion to continue item A to October 14th, 2014? Not all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, item B, One Sunset Parkway, this application has been withdrawn, and that leaves item C, and we're going to hear from Shannon Tuck, a public hearing to consider amending Chapter Seven of the Code of Ordinances to amend the definition of gated communities. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Manheimer, members of council, and members of the public. What is before you this evening is a wording amendment that updates the definition of gated community, and this update is designed to provide an opportunity that doesn't currently exist, that would allow property owners to secure their individual parcels, usually for security or traffic control purposes. To understand the current request, it's helpful to have a little bit of background. Back in 2007, the city adopted a prohibition on gated communities. This prohibition was realized first by adopting a definition of what is a gated community, and then expressly prohibiting said gated communities in every zoning district that allowed residential development. This is, oops, is that, do I have anything? This is the current definition of gated communities. Gated community means a subdivision, neighborhood, or residential community to which entry is restricted to residents and their guests, often includes barriers such as gates, security personnel, fences, and/or walls. So, you can see this definition is fairly simple, but it's written quite broadly. Since the adoption of this prohibition and this definition, our staff have received multiple requests for gates. Some of these requests we have been able to grant because we didn't feel that it constituted a gated community. Other requests were not granted. In some instances, granting the request seemed appropriate, but there was at least one case where we felt that by granting the request, that we needed to grant the request, however, it was somewhat contrary to the original intent of the prohibition. And then, in other instances where we denied the request, we felt that those requests were not necessarily contrary to the intent of the original prohibition. So, identifying the intent of the past actions from seven years ago can be a little bit tricky, but a review of the original staff report, the meeting minutes, the staff's personal accounts of the events that led up to that amendment, the intent appears to be twofold. The first is to promote a sense of community and inclusivity as opposed to exclusivity. So, if a new residential development is constructed adjacent to an existing historic neighborhood, that that new development would be welcomed, those new residents would be welcomed as much as the old, and vice versa. If a new development comes in, that they wouldn't necessarily wall themselves off and not be part of the fabric of the existing fabric of that neighborhood. The second intent appears to be to allow for better access between and amongst the communities by maintaining or promoting vehicular or pedestrian connections. This new proposed definition seeks to respect the original intent while addressing these more recent community concerns and requests. So, revised definition would read like this. Gated community means a subdivision, neighborhood, or residential community, so the definitions start off the same way, where any vehicular or defined pedestrian access, and this is the part that differs, to more than one parcel is unavailable to the general public as a result of a barrier that may include, but would not be limited to, gates, security personnel, fences, or walls. And again, for additional clarification, this definition would not include gates or other barriers limiting access to an individual parcel. So, to help illustrate how or what the difference between these two definitions are and how it would be applied, I've created a few illustrations. So, this is a very simple illustration. The dark bold lines are intended to represent streets, existing streets, the little squares are home footprints, and then you've got a large swath of undeveloped property in between. So, in this scenario, you've got two neighborhoods that are separated by this undeveloped portion of property. Now, most requests for gates come with new development, but we do occasionally get a request, for instance, if this were a dead-end road with these five parcels, and perhaps these are privately maintained streets, these individuals get together and decide they want to have a gate here because they're tired of people trying to, you know, find some sort of connection that doesn't exist, as an example, traffic control maybe is their intent, maybe security is their intent. In this instance, because providing a gate here would prohibit access or would limit access between more than one parcel, we would not allow a gate to be installed. However, on an individual parcel, if you have a private driveway and the individual parcel wants to gate across that, we would allow that. Take in the same context a little bit further, let's say the owner of that undeveloped swath of land decides that they want to market their property and make it more attractive for redevelopment, and they build a new road that connects these two neighborhoods that are formerly separated. We would not allow this road to be gated because, again, it would preclude access beyond more than- or between more than one parcel. However, say the property, the upper portion of the property is further subdivided, and parcel A is sold to an apartment developer, parcel B is sold to a retirement community developer. There is nothing, based on the new definition, that would prohibit the owner or the developer of either parcel to go ahead and gate the access into those parcels, and that's because this is an individually-owned parcel. So, just like that single-family home sits on a single parcel, and you can gate that driveway, this community sits on a single parcel, and you can gate that driveway, even though there are multiple units on the property, it's a single parcel of land. Taking it another step further, let's say the lower portion of the property now is sold to developer C who's interested in doing single-family or, say, townhome developments. And what I've illustrated here is intended to represent a townhome footprint. To build townhomes, you're required to build new roads, they have to have road frontage because they do sit on individually-owned parcels of land, so this would require the creation of new roads. So, we would not allow, in this scenario, the gating of these communities. I thought it was important to use a townhome development as opposed to single-family because I think there's this perception that a townhome development, because there is commonly-owned land, is similar to a multifamily development, and it's similar in the sense that you have commonly-owned land, you have multiple units, however- However, it is different because it does require road connections. It is individually owned property as opposed to apartments that are typically rented. So in this scenario, we would not allow a gate, but in those former scenarios, we And those are the illustrations that I have to share. I think it might be also worth noting that in an apartment complex, when you enter up through that driveway, typically you enter into a large parking field, unlike that townhome scenario where you really do have road connectivity. So to summarize, after careful consideration, staff recommends approval of this amendment and feels that it is reasonable and consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans and goals. Be happy to answer any questions or kind of clarify this further.
I have any questions from council before I open the public hearing? Okay. All right. I will now open the public hearing on item C of the agenda. Anyone wishing to make comment on this item? This is the time. All right. Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the amendment to the definition of gated communities.
Five seconds.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, you also want to adopt the portion of the motion that includes the comprehensive plan consistency, which is, I think, written in the staff report.
And so our motion maker did that? Yes?
Yes.
Who was the motion maker?
I seconded it.
Yes. Upon reflection, do you want us to vote again on it?
No, you can vote separately on it to make sure that it's actually...
Oh, it's two separate motions? Okay.
It can be two.
Okay.
And if you see the recommended, where it sets out specifically how it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and reasonable in the public interest.
Okay. On page two, I move to approve at the bottom.
Gotcha.
Ready? You want to...
I move to approve the wording amendment because it's reasonable, consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans for the following reasons. Controlling access and empowering property owners supports the police goals of the Asheville City Development Plan. The amendment preserves the goal of connectivity and community in the land use and transportation section of the Asheville City Development Plan, and the amendment protects personal security and promotes effective traffic control.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. That concludes the public hearings portion of our agenda. Next, we have a few items on unfinished business, well, one item with subparts. And at this point, I am going to turn the agenda over to Councilmember Mark Hunt.
Thank you, Mayor. I requested from the mayor the opportunity to offer some remarks in advance of the staff presentation on this, just to offer a little context, a little bit of reflection. What we'll have is resolutions to approve three leases to the tenants of Pack Place. That's a significant change in the property management structure at Pack Place. And so, and there's been just lots of work and effort for many months that has gone into this. And we are at a juncture now where the city is prepared to look forward. I do plan to support each of the resolutions. I hope that my colleagues on council will do that alongside me. The city is the ultimate steward of Pack Place. It is clearly city-owned real estate. The city ultimately is in the position of assuring that the Pack Place Center and its occupants are successful, and we've taken that duty very seriously for many months. And we've made it clear that what the city's goals are as that steward at Pack Place. First of all, the success of the operating tenants at Pack Place is paramount. Those are the Colburn Museum, the Diana Wortham Theater, and the Asheville Art Museum. It's also important that the center is managed well from a property management standpoint, and it's important that things flow well financially in terms of the financial arrangements there. It's my view that, on balance, these leases, this approach where the city would provide direct leases to the three occupant tenants, on balance achieves that very well. Now, there are many stakeholders involved here, and there have been others historically involved, and I think it's fair to say that there is no single individual or single entity involved as a stakeholder that would view this initiative tonight as perfect and ideal. It is a, it is very much a brokered outcome. The staff and council of the city have worked very hard to try to make sure that the balanced interests of all parties here are knitted together best we can, and I'm confident that we've done that. Among the specific stakeholder groups that have played a vital role here, I'd like to just offer comments directly to some of you. First of all, the founders and early supporters of Pack Place. Pack Place Center opened 22 years ago. The visioning for it and the work that went into generate funding and make it a reality extended for at least 10 years prior to that. I didn't live here at that time, but I've read some of the history. Because of the state of downtown Asheville, the weakness of our economy, really the lack of vibrancy downtown, there was real vision and real risk-taking and real commitment that went into that. And I think that, especially at this moment, it's important that the city of Asheville and the whole community acknowledge those gifts, really, that were made back then and the commitment. And many of the people that were involved then are in the community today and remain active and concerned about the future of Pack Place. To the staff and the board members of Pack Place Incorporated, who has had the property management role to now, I would likewise offer an enormous thanks. The structure, the governance structure and the property management structure of Pack Place was established largely 22 years ago, and the folks that have worked on behalf of Pack Place, Inc. have done it faithfully in that structure best they can, tireless work, thankless work many days. And I know that there's frustration on the part of some in regard to that, but again, a huge thanks. And I just want to acknowledge that, that it's my view that you guys have worked hard, the best way you know how. To Buncombe County government, there were a number of funding partners that came together 22-plus years ago to make this Pack Place Center a reality. Buncombe County made a commitment back then and has stuck with it since then to fund operations and support the work that goes on in that building. The city appreciates very much the partnership of the county, eager to work in the future, similarly, in a strong partnership to assure the success of the building, the center, the occupants of it. To the tenant operating occupants of the building, Asheville Art Museum and Diana Wortham Theater, you are the two entities that are going to have very long-term leases. The city manager will go over the details here, but we're talking about 30- and 50-year commitments for reliable, predictable, stable operations and occupancy of the building for you guys. We are eager to partner strongly and supportively with you. I think that our discussions and negotiations over the past few months and weeks, and especially days, has demonstrated our commitment toward that partnership, and we're eager to work right alongside you to make you successful as organizations. You contribute enormously to the vitality of downtown, to the enjoyment of our amenities there in the building, and we appreciate that. Colburn Earth Science Museum will lease, will occupy the building for one more year under this lease arrangement. That's a lease that we have up for approval again tonight. Colburn's Board of Directors, I think, has had a very unique, interesting, difficult experience in recent months, trying to gauge, first of all, their preference in locating in Pack Place, and if not, where else to move to. Colburn is very much an organization in transition. It will seek and find a new home beginning a little less than a year from now. And I would like to suggest to the community that the Colburn Earth Science Museum is a vitally important asset to this community, just like the other two occupants of the building are. Our region and community's natural heritage is reflected in what Colburn offers. There are not many communities that have an Earth Science Museum. It's important for public, for education of young people and for family experiences. And if the people in the community are concerned about the future of organizations in this, I would encourage, take a look at Colburn as an organization, to consider stepping up and supporting. I am very hopeful for the future of Colburn. Finally, the staff that works at the city here, this, the, it's been my role to be a board member of Pack Place. I've had a lot of my own effort in trying to support a way forward through all this. I know there have been times when our staff have felt dragged into the mire of a very difficult, challenging project. And to our legal staff, our legal consultant Fred Barber, Gary Jackson especially, I want to just say thank you so much. And to fellow council members, thank you for your patience. There's been an enormous amount of work, and I think that patience is paying off in this case in the form of a reasonable, balanced way forward for this Pack Place Center institution and the community. So, Mayor, with that, I wanted to offer those reflections before we get into the details. I know that the city manager plans to offer overviews of these different leases and the overall arrangement. I know that there are probably some members of the public that'd like to comment, but I appreciate the opportunity to offer this overview. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, would you like to take it from here?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
The proposed leases have been negotiated with the three tenants of Pack Place Center, those being Asheville Art Museum, Colburn Earth Science Museum, and the Diana Wortham Theater. And so the action before the council tonight is to act upon those proposed leases, authorizing the mayor to enter into those terms. So what I'd like to do is summarize the terms of those three leases, and then answer any questions that the council may have with the assistance of, try to answer them with the assistance of Fred Barber, the legal consultant, and the city attorney, of course. But the, my suggestion would be for you to allow me to go through all three and hit the terms and answer any questions. You will need to act upon these as individual leases, individual motions and actions on those resolutions. Okay? And your actions tonight on the resolutions provides the framework to finalize the actual lease documents themselves. So these terms are important because they will be taken from the staff report, the minutes today, and then built right into those lease documents, and those lease documents will be finalized as soon as possible. Okay? And we will make those available to the public as soon as they are finalized. There's a 10, how long a period, city attorney?
10 days.
There's a 10-day time period in which those leases have to be available for public review and comment. And we intend, that would be the next step, assuming your action tonight is to proceed. In the case of the Asheville Art Museum, the premises leased are the spaces that are currently occupied by the Asheville Art Museum. The term would be 30 years with two renewable options of 10 years each. Rent, rent is addressed through capital maintenance payments to a sinking fund, which the city would establish for that capital maintenance. This is in lieu of rent payments. Starting July 1, 2015, Asheville Art Museum will make payments into the city fund for capital maintenance. Those annual amounts are, first year, $21,000, second year, $25,200, third year, $29,433,600, in the fourth year, and $37,800 in the fifth year. And the idea is to establish this payment and create a capital reserve fund, so we better maintain the building, and we complement these payments with those that would be made by Diana Wortham Theater and that budgeting that the council would authorize through the city's capital budget as well. These amounts that I just read to you are different than where we're in the staff report, which was issued earlier, so I bring special attention to those amounts. I will come further as I go down. I will discuss the amounts that would be paid by Diana Wortham Theater. And so the result is that as we negotiated with Diana Wortham Theater, that we wanted to find parity and bring those into pro, rated based upon the lease space and bring equality between these payments. And so for that reason, where we arrived at a phased-in program for Diana Wortham Theater and set payment schedule for five years, after we arrived at those, then we went back and adjusted the original amount to reflect that parity between the two. Okay? Be happy to answer any questions about that. Again, the payments would be reevaluated every five years, but this sets a precedent and in place and a type of savings funds for capital improvements that we've not had before today. Payments would be suspended for those capital maintenance items for three years during the construction of the Asheville Art Museum renovations. Net separation charges, separation changes. In order to proceed with the relocation, which is also linked to this lease agreement, in order for the Asheville Art Museum to proceed, there are some modifications to the building that the Asheville Art Museum has stepped up and said they will be responsible for, and we commend them for that. They are placed at a cap of $250,000. They would address fire code issues, Americans with Disabilities Act requirements, pay for such things as fire code, compliance, sprinkler installation in the arcade breezeway to the Biltmore Avenue, and installation of an elevator from the Diana Wortham Theater lower lobby level to the packed square level of the Diana Wortham Theater lobby today. There is an interpretive exhibit that many of you are familiar with that needs to be relocated as well to meet the approval of the State Historic Preservation Office. The Asheville Art Museum has agreed to a cap for those relocation costs of up to $25,000. We have verified staff, historic preservation staff, staff has looked into this, and we believe that that number can be met or reduced, that savings would accrue to the Asheville Art Museum, and staff will work directly with the Asheville Art Museum to accomplish that, an acceptable relocation of that interpretive exhibit. Asheville Art Museum will also pay the sum of $47,000 for office relocation and outfit expenses for the Diana Wortham Theater. One important development in this negotiation is that with the vacancy of the Colburn Art, the Colburn Earth Science Museum on June 7, 2015, that provides an exceptional space into which the Diana Wortham Theater can relocate their offices. As you know, that was a requirement, that there had to be an acceptable relocation of those Diana Wortham offices in order for the art museum renovation to proceed because they're currently in the atrium of the art museum's primary building. Colburn Earth Science Museum is a more traditional lease. They would be paying rent for the space they currently occupied from August 1st to June 7, 2015. The rental rate would be at an amount of $1,450 per month, beginning January 1, 2015. Diana Wortham Theater, the premises leased would be the Diana Wortham Theater plus primary exhibit space currently occupied by the Colburn. It would be for 30 years with two renewal terms of 10 years each, and the Colburn space may be occupied after June 7, 2015. Their payments to capital maintenance would begin as well, July 1, 2015. Their annual payments would be phased in, as with the art museum, starting at $15,000 the first year, $18,000, $21,000, $24,000, and $27,000 in those five years. Those annual payments are calculated based upon the square footage they now occupy, and as they move into the Colburn spaces, within six... and as they move into the Colburn spaces, six, within six months after the Colburn space is made available to them, they will begin paying an adjusted higher amount to capital maintenance based upon their prorated share of the square footage. Okay? And they are in agreement with accepting the $47,000 allocation from the art museum, and will work within that allocation to accomplish the relocation of their offices. There are many pros and advantages to this. Would have said, six months ago, that it would be a monumental feat to be here, and I too commend the council for their support, Mark Hunt for his leadership, and the yeoman work of our consultant Fred Barber in working through the details. We're building long-term relationships here, and hopefully, these leases establish that and bring everybody on good terms. There are remaining, the one remaining outstanding issue, which I believe the parties can speak to tonight, but are, we're all hopeful that they can continue to work on that, is as the Colburn relocates, there is space that would not be necessary for the new studio and offices of the Diana Wortham Theater. That is some vault space and some exhibit space in the very back of the Colburn area that would be available to the Asheville Art Museum for location of air conditioning equipment and for storage in the vault space. That remaining issue with their acceptance of that space would be enhancing, if possible, the access to that. There currently are fire stairwells to those spaces, but certainly are not ideal for moving and storing items there. And the dialogue continued on that between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock tonight, and I'm hopeful that it will continue beyond today, but I believe that the parties can speak to that when it's their turn. And that summarizes the lease terms.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Jackson at this point, before we move forward? Okay, or just any questions in general? Okay. So, we, while we need to vote separately on each of the resolutions, but I can, I can open the comment period now collectively on the three. Would that be an acceptable process to the body? All right. The process we'll use for this next part is that individuals are invited to make comment for up to three minutes, but if you're speaking for a group of three or more that you can identify for us here in the chamber, then you're welcome to make comment for up to ten minutes. So, what we'll do is open it up to make comment on any of the three leases, so if you want to speak to one, that's fine, or if you want to speak to the entire process, that's fine. So, at this time, what I'll do is just give me, raise your hand, and I'll have you come forward. If there's representatives from the various entities, maybe they, maybe they want to start out, I don't know. I'm just making a suggestion, however you want to do it. This could be really quick. Okay. Yes, over here, wishing to make comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. You know, I live in the county, and the...
Jerry, that's your full name.
Jerry, right. And, you know, the, the point I'm coming from is twenty-two years ago, if you can't get a dead horse alive in twenty-two years, I don't think the government is going to do any better. And my personal opinion is that I think county government, city government, needs to get out of the business of things that will grant, bring the tax base and stuff back to the taxpayers' relief. I believe that this is a monstrous program to undertake and be endeavored in by the county or the city. The day at TDA Advisory Committee that I heard, there was some fuzzy numbers, and when you hear that term, you know what I'm saying, even confusion about projections. Whenever you have doubts, the best thing to do is pull back and rethink it. I've been to these meetings, you can see my YouTube videos, and you can see that the boards have not really been engaged in this process. It's been the lawyers, and it's been people behind the scene. It has not been the boards. They're confused, they're looking at one another and asking questions. Now, you don't have to take my word for it, just go and look at the YouTube if you've got time. If you ain't got time, you don't need to be voting on this. So, I think we need to look at this objectively and figure out a different way of doing this, because we are talking about multi-millions of dollars, and, and government ain't going to solve this problem. Thank you.
The city of Asheville is opening itself up to lawsuits. The city's already paid or been invoiced for $33,000 in outside attorney fees. The Asheville Art Museum is a poor excuse for a nonprofit corporation. They're a greedy group of adults that have been feeding at the tax trough for too long, free rent worth a million dollars a year, and free operating expenses. They've wrecked Pack Place by direct dealing with the Asheville City Council, which is a violation of their partnership agreement with Pack Place. The real reason the art museum wants a direct lease is to get out of the control and building management of the Pack Place Board. And unfortunately, the city council and manager have devised a public stance that supports the art museum hidden agenda. City taxpayers should be outraged in the fact that the city council went up three cents on the tax rate last year. Two million dollars of that was to be spent on the art museum. The project was not done. The money was moved without action of the city council to a project called Pack Place Maintenance, and I think that the tax rate was put on prematurely, and I assume that the city council didn't want to take the heat funding the art museum, so they changed the wording to Pack Place. Mary Robinson, Pack Place attorney, advised that if the city refuses to retract, to retract Mr. Jackson's letter, Pack Place will take all legal actions necessary to defend its rights and the rights of its members. The city has no legal authority to enter into a lease agreement at this time without taking full, making full restitution to Pack Place, as called for in the lease agreement between the city and Pack Place. I understand this obligation is $5 million or more. This is a fifty-year lease, folks, and your general statutes say you can't enter into a lease more than ten years if you, as a city council, believe that the city may need that place, that property, in fifty years. So, you can't do a thirty, a fifty-year lease. The action of the council and the city manager is plain and simple extortion. This is the effect their action has had on the Colburn moving and the demise of Pack Place. There's no evidence that Pack Place has not maintained the building. This is smoke and mirrors by Vice Mayor Hunt and the city manager. There is no documentation that supports the proposed capital funding that is in these lease agreements. It's an atmospheric calculation, another gift from the city. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I see a hand. Yes, Mr. Bissett. First, over here.
Hi, my name is Judy Strong, and I don't have all the information these two gentlemen have, but I do know that the Asheville Art Museum has been attempting to raise the $17 million for a number of years, and they've gone into default a number of times. And I see nothing in this lease that prevents you all from taking taxpayer dollars to assist the Asheville Art Museum from completing all their renovations. I think it's going to fall on the taxpayers, and I'm not interested at all. And when you talk about these, the amounts of rent, however you want to define it, does that include all the repairs or, or things that were supposedly not done by Pack Place to maintain the property? It sounds to me like, again, what this gentleman said, you all are pulling, trying to pull the hood over our eyes, and you're challenging our tax dollars again. If you, I understand that, they say that they're, they are only liable for $250,000 to meet all these compliances for fire. Who pays the rents, rest, in case it goes more? Who pays if this, if the Asheville Art Museum can't pay, can't come up with this $17 million, which they don't seem to be able to do right now? Again, is it the taxpayer? I thought Pack Place was going great with everything that was being done. There was nothing that I saw that needed to be changed, but you all seem to think that there was something, and I would like to know what exactly the maintenance things were that they did not do. And I understood that there was a problem with the entrance to the Diana Wortham Theater. Was that addressed? Are they, is the Asheville Art Museum going to ultimately close down the Diana Wortham Theater? You, you say that the Pack, the Asheville Art Museum does not have to pay this so-called rent during the three years of renovations. Who comes up with the money then, those three years? So, you are already planning on using tax dollars to support the Asheville Art Museum, when you're not asking the city of Asheville to vote on this. You're saying, "Go ahead, we will, we will sneak in the tax increases." I'm sorry, you all are just doing something and not really considering what the tax implications are to the people of Asheville, and I'm sorry for that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Bissett is coming forward. I think we, we got a little bit out of order, sorry.
I am Reverend Lisa Landis, and I wasn't going to speak, but I keep hearing about the art, and my question is, is any of the public education and government money, the PEG money that is certified by the state, I think it's like one and $1.5 million, is any of that money being utilized for what you're planning here with the art museum and everything? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bissett.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is Lou Bissett. I'm very interested in this project for a number of reasons. Number one, I've represented the Asheville Art Museum throughout the last, I think it's been a couple of years of the negotiations of this lease. I'm also a contributor to the, to the museum and its capital campaign, and I was the mayor when the idea for the Pack Place Center was hatched. So, I'm, it, it's a place that is very dear and, near and dear to my heart. The lease has been worked and worked and been reviewed by each of the partners. I've been told, you know, that when you have a big negotiation like this, and you get finished, and nobody's happy, it's a pretty good lease. So, I think that's, that's the case here. Pack Place, you know, in my mind, it was a wonderful thing twenty-five years ago when it started, but things change and institutions change, and, and we believe that the structure in the Pack Place Center needs to be changed, and we believe that this will be an efficient structure to run for the next thirty years, and that it will allow the city to maintain its building. The Asheville Art Museum has raised, to date, $15,200,000. It's not smoke and mirrors, it's being audited by the TDA accountant. Each, each donor is, is receiving a confirmation. I've been in a lot of campaigns around this town. I don't know many that have raised $15 million. So, I really think the art museum board deserves credit instead of harassment here, because they've raised this money over a period of time during which the country and our community have been through an incredible recession, a very difficult time, when the health adventure actually went out of business, along with some other nonprofits in our community. So, I, I think this is a good deal for the city, I think it's a good deal for the Asheville Art Museum, the Diana Wortham Theater, and I think it'll, it'll mean a great deal in the future, and, you know, you're, you're actually going to get, if we don't raise another penny, you're going to get $15 million put into city property. We plan, of course, to finish that, which would mean about nineteen million in total funds going into the, into the building, with some endowment on top of that. So, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this by the city manager and the city staff, and I certainly hope you'll approve these leases tonight. And we've got a number of people back here who could hopefully answer any questions that you might have. So, thank you very much.
My name is Mark Rudow, I've been representing Diana Wortham Theater, members of council. We've been through a long process of negotiation on this. I think we're satisfied with the outcome. It's very important to us that we have the Colburn space, and we've worked very closely with Vice Mayor Hunt. Mr. Councilman Davis has been helpful. Gary and Fred have also worked with us, and I think we've narrowed down our differences, probably just to the issue of the corridor that Gary Jackson was alluding to, and I think we're all in a position to work together to get that resolved in the next few weeks with the help of some architectural firms. So, I think, you know, we, we're adjusting to changing times, we're prepared to go forward with this, and I think we're confident that the terms at this point are favorable enough to us that we can proceed.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comment?
Maybe I should just stand on my tiptoes. I'm Vicki Ballard, I'm Executive Director of the Colburn Museum. Our attorney isn't here today, because our attorney, Kiri Friedman, has very graciously donated his time, and I thought I would spare him another meeting for us. We have been very grateful for the time that we have spent in Pack Place. It has allowed the Colburn to grow into a very successful science museum. We educate a lot of kids, we focus on families. We are sad to be leaving downtown Asheville, but we do feel that this is the best move for us and for our continued service to the community. Mark said he was very hopeful for our continued success, and I will tell you, Mark, that my kids are also very hopeful for that, because they don't want me living in their basement. I feel confident that the Colburn will continue to serve the community. I hope that the other organizations in Pack Place and the continued association with YMI, as part of Pack Place, will have the great success that they deserve, and we are grateful to city council, to do the work that everyone has done, and we will see you, I'm sure, in the museum. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comment on, on the three resolutions? Okay, going once, going twice, okay. Thank you. All right. Back to council, are there any other questions before we begin considering the motion, the resolutions? Any other questions or comments?
Mayor Michael mentioned the fact that we're limited by ten-year leases. Is there somebody can speak to that question?
Who wants to do that one? Fred? Fred Barber, maybe, or Janice, do you want to do it? Okay, Janice, please. We have our, an attorney to pick from.
Hi, I'm Janice Ashley with City Legal. In the resolutions I've referenced, we've referenced all the statutory authority for doing leases. You can do leases beyond ten years, 168, 272, you just need to, and on terms and conditions that the city council sees fit. And then, there are other statutes referenced that said you just need to have a certain notification period after your, your proposed lease is approved, and so, the resolution speaks to that, and this will be public, the basic terms will be advertised in a notice for a period of ten days, at which point, the leases could be signed after that time period has passed.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? That's a good question. All right. The first resolution, I think, is the Colburn, just, oh, yeah, you had a question?
No, I'd like to speak to that one.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. First of all, and the thank yous have flowed freely this evening, but I want to start with thanking Vice Mayor Hunt, who kind of got stuck in this position. Mark volunteered to be liaison at Pack Place. And I want to also thank the myriad of lawyers that we have working on all these tenants and the city's behalf, because they have worked hard to get to where we are, and I And I also want to particularly thank the Pack Place Board, who's been in place for this 25 years, because it's been a gift for the city that has kept on giving. Quite frankly, Mayor Michael Love was there as it happened, and Mayor Bissett, and a lot of folks that predate us in the room of being actively involved. And then there are a lot of us in the room that were involved the whole period of that time. But it's been, I think it was one of the things that ignited the popularity that Asheville has today. It's that cultural part that's been very, very important to this city. And I, as a business owner downtown, when a lot of downtown was boarded up, and just a fledgling business owner, had it not been for things like Pack Place and now the Pack Square, or Pack Conservancy Park, we would not have this draw to the city. And, and things do change. And I have faced this thing with trepidation. I, I think that, given where we are on it today, I don't think any of us would like to be in this position of having to make these kinds of decisions. But it started, and there's a lot of controversy in the room, and I don't think we, I think the parts of almost everybody that's got up, things that they've said have been accurate and correct, and it's a matter of perspective. I had a, a person who was a large donor on Pack Place in the beginning come to me this afternoon and say, "What the heck is going on here?" Because it is complex, and it's, it's difficult, and it's something, when Mark got involved with it, I'm certain that he didn't have a grasp but all of what was going on. But I think to boil it down to where we are now is important for our citizens. The reality is that at one point, the Health Adventure, which was a great tenant, elected to move, and at that time, the Art Museum, who was the other big tenant, the larger tenant there, said they would like to expand into that space, and everyone was agreeable. Everybody said, "Well, you know, this is the way it should be." So when the Art Museum actually did move, or the, yeah, the, when the, when the Health Adventure actually moved from the building and we started moving forward, the Art Museum started moving forward with their plans of expansion, it seemed like a good thing to do. And as time passed, Pack Place Board had to make a decision of how much we closed down for the Art Museum, how much we, how much space is, is secured, how we move forward with this transition. Colburn and Diana Wortham, which are great tenants, had to make some decisions of what their future would have. And all this is kind of a domino effect. One thing led to another. Regrettably, as we, Vice Mayor Hunt stepped into that position, he recognized pretty quickly that it wasn't moving very well. It had hit an impasse, and there was not an agreement that could get us to another place. And at this point, the city said, you know, "We have responsibilities for this building. We stepped in three years ago in an emergency, put a $300,000 HVAC part, not the whole system, but a part of a system in because we had to." The county has been a great player over the years. They redirected their funding of the Art Museum, the Colburn Mineral Museum, to Pack Place as it came online. That was their way of handling their share of responsibility of affording this for our community. And they have been great to come through with that subsidy every year. It, there was, repair needs to be done to the building. We found that the way forward was the Art Museum's expansion. And we did allocate $2 million of future budget, not first money in, but budget, to make sure those repairs go on with the expansion of this Art Museum. So we're here today to get to that better place, and that is to, to do separate leases that will get the building repaired. It will afford the Art Museum to be, to stand alone better, to actually contribute to future repairs. It will afford Diana Wortham to have a larger space, to move forward with their, their plans for the future. They've also had a strategic plan that's moving forward. Colburn Mineral Museum has elected to stay for another year, and they have plans to move forward. So we are at the juncture that a responsible city council needs to be. We had to take an action here that not everybody's comfortable with. Not everybody in the room is happy with it, as Mayor Bissett said. But at this time, we're doing what we have to do to ensure the sustainability of those entities in that building and to make sure our citizens' monies are protected. And that's what we're doing this evening. So with that, I hope we've cleared up, I've cleared up a few questions about, but the reality is, we have a responsibility, this is the best way for us to approach it that we can find. So with that, I'd like to move that we, we authorize the mayor to execute a lease agreement with the Colburn Earth Science Museum and, and direct the city clerk to publish notice of such lease proposal authorization, or authorizing the mayor to execute this lease agreement upon expiration of a 10-day public notification period. And with that, I'll make that.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay? Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I would extend that comment backward a little further because people tend to lose sight of history of things. And, you know, the Art Museum and the Colburn Museum started, as I remember, in the Civic Center. And then the city created a bond issue in order to, to create the, what we now know as Pack Place. So we heard a comment tonight that the government shouldn't be involved. Well, the government's been involved in this for a long, long time, and that's true of a lot of cultural things. And it, it could have been true that the Health Adventure succeeded and the Art Museum failed. The Colburn could have failed. Diana Wortham could have failed. I mean, we had no way of knowing 25 years ago which tenants would be the survivors and how it had to work out in the future. What would grow and what would shrink? You know, so what we're coping with here is change, and change happens. And, and I think that in good faith, all of the entities have, have tried to hammer out their best deals. As Mayor Bissett said, if everybody's unhappy, we've done something right. And I, I think this is a good way forward, so I'm happy to support these leases.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Just a quick question. We've taken comment already. Do I need to, to open that up again at this point? I don't know that I'm required to. Okay. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I constitute all three resolutions.
Now, we just did Colburn. Now we need to do Asheville Art Museum and Diana Wortham in separate motions. Do I have a motion?
I'd move to approve the lease to the Asheville Art Museum, directing the city clerk to publish notice of such lease proposal and authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement upon expiration of the 10-day public notification period.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then finally, I need a motion for Diana Wortham Theater's lease.
Resolution, a resolution proposing approval of a lease for, with, with the Diana Wortham Theater, directing the city clerk to publish notice of such lease proposal and authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement upon expiration of the 10-day public notification period.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have completed that agenda item, and I, I just want to reiterate the thank you to everyone for all of their hard work, and, and I can't say enough about how much time and energy has been put into this effort, and I suspect that there will be more. There will be more to come. But, but this is a great, this is a great achievement tonight. Thank you. All right. I'm going to turn the next part of the agenda, new business, over to the vice mayor, boards and commissions.
Thank you, Mayor. Boards and Commissions Committee met this afternoon at 4:15, and we had a few tasks to cover. The first one is regarding the Civic Center Commission concerning which candidates that we might recommend interviewing. The Boards and Commissions Committee recommends that we interview Yvonne Cook Riley and Greg Duff for appointments to the Civic Center Commission.
That was the interview recommendation.
That's the interview. It's not the actual appointment. Sorry.
Any motion?
No.
I'll open it to any additional candidates on the list. Bill Russell is a candidate on the list that we view as a viable candidate, but we, we think we all know Bill well and wouldn't necessarily need to interview him. So in addition to considering Bill, we recommend the interviewing of Yvonne Cook Riley and Greg Duff. We will not make this appointment until later.
Yeah. We also, if you don't mind me.
Please.
Butting in. We will extend the opportunity for Bill to be interviewed if he wishes, but we felt like that everyone knew Bill well enough to, to leave him out of that process if he, unless he'd like.
Gotcha.
Okay, so we're good with, with that plan for Civic Center Commission. For Community Relations Council, we have delayed the appointment and interview process for several months now, and the Boards and Commissions Committee recommends the appointment tonight of Fife Ashenbrunner to that, to that council. We also are eager to move forward with some discussion about the, the organization and, and flow of that, of that body as well. But for tonight, recommend appointment tonight of Fife Ashenbrunner.
Just briefly, if I may, Vice Mayor Hunt. As liaison to the Community Relations Council, I spoke with the chair today, Larry McCollum over there. They have been in a recruitment process, and they pulled in a couple more candidates who withdrew unexpectedly over the last couple of weeks. They have asked me today for the indulgence of council to have one more month before making that appointment. The chair is aware that this process has gone on longer than anyone's comfortable with, but they are asking for that one more month.
So I think there, there are two options on the table there. I don't, I'm not eager for us to have, have too much controversy here, but what, are there other thoughts that other members might have?
How many seats are we filling? Just the one?
One, one seat.
I don't have too much problem with holding them open another month. Those people are serving and I'm good with it if everyone else is.
I'm comfortable extending.
I might ask Maggie if you wouldn't mind contacting the current applicant sitting in the pool there, because some of these are pretty dated. It makes sure they still have an interest.
Sure.
Might be helpful.
Okay, so we'll extend that one more month to the last.
Thank you. I'll let Mr. McCollum know.
The fourth week, fourth Tuesday in August. Multimodal Transportation Commission, we've got a number of active applicants for that. That commission is actually meeting tomorrow. They requested the opportunity to discuss and make recommendations, which is a routine thing for these commissions to do. And, and so our Boards and Commissions Committee recommends pushing that forward to the fourth Tuesday in August. Folks okay with that? Nod please? Yes. Finally, Planning and Zoning Commission, appointment process. Our P&amp;Z Commission is, is actually got some statutory regulatory authority. We always regard it as a very critical, important one to get right. We had a couple of years ago adopted an approach that includes full interviews of, of candidates by the full council in open session and a more thorough screening process that involves candidates submitting responses to certain questions in advance and then appearing down on the candidate list based on responses to those questions. So laying this out, we have three current members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Jane Matthews, Jeremy Goldstein, and Kristy Carter, all three of whom are eligible for and wish reappointment. Additionally, we have four members of the public who have applied for membership there, Jeff Mahoney, Mark Deverges, Pratik Bhakta, and David Brown. I've got that right, don't I? Maggie, thank you for the nod there. It's the Boards and Commissions Committee's recommendation that we interview six individuals. There are seven total in play that I just mentioned. We ask that those seven candidates submit responses to the following five questions, and these five questions were sorted through by input by email from council members, and let me read those. Some of these are reflective of questions we asked a couple of years ago, others are new. "Please take time to review the city's 2025 plan. How strongly does your own vision align with that plan, and in what ways might it differ?" Number two, "Name one Planning and Zoning Commission decision in the last 18 months you've agreed with and one you've disagreed with or would have struggled with. Please explain your rationale for each." Question three, "What are some positive and negative effects of Asheville zoning regulations?" Question four, "How has existing zoning promoted or inhibited the construction of affordable housing in Asheville? What changes could be made to further the creation of affordable housing?" And finally, number five, "Are there any changes to the city's processes, including but not limited to public input, for addressing zoning changes that you would like to see made?" So these seven candidates will receive these questions by email tomorrow, I think, from City Clerk Maggie Burleson. They'll have a few days to respond. Counsel by email will sort through those responses, review them, and indicate which of the seven candidates, which six of the seven, that we will interview, and those interviews will be in the, begin around 2:00 PM on August the 26th. What did I leave out? I think, great, thank you. Mayor, that wraps up the Boards and Commissions business for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We, we have some folks that have signed up for public comment. We do have a closed session, so everyone stay tuned. The first person I have that signed up is Mr. Michael Love, but I see that he has exited the room. And the second is Mr. Rice. And let me just reiterate the rules about this. The public comment period is to be on topics that we haven't already covered during city council.
Thank you. I filled that out thinking you didn't have a public hearing. Jerry Rice from Canada. Saw the police report, and I thought Mr. Davis made some great points about the homeless and the people with mental health. And I've done this for 26 years now, helping the disabled and the mentally ill and substance abuse different. And one of the things that I think would help would be the officers, not the one that's current in. They're focusing on them to get them training, but also take AB Tech and get the training in, in the front end, not the rear end. And also your school staff, officers, they really need that kind of training. And Buncombe County is the same way. You think they're trained, but they're not. They're not, they're not all trained. And a lot of these controversies and things that you're having is starting right in the school. And for 26 years that I've seen this, it's all started at the base, and we need to get it in, nip it in the bud, not wait to have the officers in conflict and get killed if they just only knew the person. You know, being in the community is a good thing, but being trained to deal with these folks is another. And I think AB Tech and your four-year colleges, places like that, is a good place to start, even with teachers as well as officers. Thank you.
Mayor, may I respond to Mr. Rice? Those are great points, and I'm not sure if anyone's aware of this in the room, but we did have a person that was a, could have been a jumper from Smoky Park Bridge, and our officers arrived there, and this is a, this is not a frequent occurrence, thankfully, but on a number of occasions, our off, we do have people that are trained in negotiation and dealing with people that have, have mental or substance abuse problems, and it is something that we have a good many trained in, and we are very cognizant, and that's part of what the new strategic plan addresses. I think that we'll find also, we don't do a good job of telling that story, and, and that's another part of that plan. Our communication, working with Dalla Hitches Department, is going to be improved, so I think that, that's all good stuff. Thank you.
Okay. And the next person I have signed up to speak is the Reverend Lisa Landis.
I would like to know if, or three people would give up their time, so I could have two, three? Cool. I am Reverend Lisa Landis, better known as Glow Lady. You'll need to know this to look it up on, on YouTube, GLO. Cool. I am Reverend Lisa Landis, better known as Glow Lady. You'll need to know this to look it up on YouTube. G-L-O-L-A-D-Y. I was speaking to a few people before this meeting, so I had a couple of people who wanted me to say some things for them. And first of all, there's this woman over in West Asheville, and she has some honey that is the elixir of the gods, I swear. It is the best. And she was saying about how the bees have died off, and that she really can't produce, if we're going to be lucky, more honey coming up. So that's something that really needs to be addressed. We have some really great taste in honey around here. Something else that she also told me about was the American disabilities. I don't know if you have hearing impaired, how much hearing impaired that you have here, but this is something that she had brought up to me that she wanted me to bring up to you, that you should have something for the people who come and cannot hear, some type of hearing aid for them. The Peace Park, I don't know how many of you knew about the Peace Park that is across from the Civic Center. And the other day, we went there, and there was an officer there, well, really wasn't an officer, but he was somebody with the city, and he was going to make the elderly that were there move their chairs and their blankets, that were there to listen to some music. And when we're talking about the police, it's like, come on, people, we do have a right to assemble peaceably, and if they're going to be there for an hour to sit on their chairs to watch a choir sing, what is the problem? Because it didn't even start yet, and they were already there. So I had requested to see the ordinance, but the ordinance was never brought back. Okay, let's see. What do I want to talk about first? Okay, we'll go back to, we had the officer talking about, and I had said about a video that you really need to see, because you really need to see the video. It is titled "Injustice by Asheville Police Again." And these are some children. These are our children. We have children who choose to live home free. This is their choice. They are damned, they are attacked, they are beaten, their property stolen, and something needs to be done about this. You need to look into the allegations that these children brought up, allegations that they were just taken in, no charges, left out, no charges, but they were also given drugs while they were in there. So these are very serious charges that need to be addressed. And then I guess I'm going to talk about the audit room. I can't believe that you're just going to sign off on somebody who took a little bit of drugs for his own recreational, and the guns and the drugs, the other drugs and the money. It's, oh, okay, well, we found somebody, and that's it. I'm sorry, but that doesn't, that does not sit well for me in the sound of justice. Okay, let me see. One of the things that you'll see on the video is that the boy had said something about having a camera. You're talking about providing for the police. So the idea of having a camera, or at least a microphone on the police, could back up them for not being or doing, instead of, you know, hey, we have evidence that this is what you're doing. You know, when you're talking about the quality of life, you know, they're talking about the quality of life, making it better, and it's like, you know, being prejudiced is not right. Panhandling free speech. It's like, we, the people, have unalienable rights, and one of them is to communicate with each other. And if we are denied the right to communicate with each other, then we can't tell somebody, hey, man, I'm hurting, I have a problem, because there are no social programs that will help the people. There is no one who will give out money so you can go and look for a job. There was no one who will give out money so you can keep a job until you get your first paycheck. So when you're out there and you're looking at people and you're pointing your finger in judgment, you also have to remember there's three fingers folded back. Just because you're not homeless today doesn't mean that you won't be homeless tomorrow. So you have to start looking at compassion with all, or towards all people, and not just people in your own prejudice, you know, and that's how I see it. I see an us and them. I see a government and the people. I do not see a government that is of the people, for the people, and by the people. I see a government that is privileged, that uses the money at their own discretion to do whatever they want to do with it, and not consider the people or the people's voices in what they're telling the government that they want them to do with it. Something about the 2011 videos were taken down. Why was energy, why was work utilized to take down the 2011 videos of the city council meetings? And the information that is up there, when the people are speaking, and the people are speaking for three minutes, one sentence is not three minutes' worth of the public speech. So I'm asking, who took down the 2011 videos, and I'm asking why? Now, you had a request for a proposal that was for the free speech, that was for our First Amendment platform, that the city was identified as a conspirator by the Commissioner, David Gant, by the chairman, David Gant, had said the city is now part of, the city is now responsible for. And this request for proposal, the thing that was really disgusting about it is that it was exactly what we had at URTV. Exactly. If you go back over your request for proposal, what you were asking for is exactly what we, the people, had established, ordained and established as a First Amendment platform, we, the people. So, you know, I'm going to question about that, but there are, you know, there's a lot of interesting things. So, you know, I had stood up in front of you in February, and I had requested to settle out of court for the damages that were done to me. And I had also requested to settle out of court with Buncombe County, and that was back in 2011. And I have, you know, received the same, you know, negative experience in trying to, you know, be nice. I know the difference between right and wrong. These past nine months, I have studied law. I understand constitutional law. I also understand natural law, and I know that what was done were criminal acts. I have filed a civil rights lawsuit in federal court, and I had contacted PMA, which is your insurance adjuster, and I had let them know that I had decided that I would not settle, that I am going to file a civil rights lawsuit. And then when I was prejudiced in federal court by the judge, and I had to pay the $400, I not only, not only am suing for myself, but it is now turned into a class action lawsuit for we, the people. It is not only myself that you had hurt, that you have hurt, that you continue to hurt. So I have affidavits for the people. I found out that I have 120 days after I first filed on June 9 to serve the people that I have filed against. I have blank affidavits, and I am seeking people of the community who have been harmed in any form or fashion by the city of Asheville or the Buncombe County Commissioners or Buncombe County Government to come forward and join me in this civil rights, in this class action lawsuit, because we, the people, have the power. We, the people, have the power over our government. Our government is of the people, for the people, and by the people. And when our government says no, when our government rules tyrannically and says, listen, this is the way it's going to go, we don't care what you say, we'll give you three minutes, if we like what you say, that is wrong, that is restricted. Our First Amendment, that is our unalienable right, freedom of speech, freedom to associate with each other, I have a right to hold my government accountable if what I see is being done wrong. So I know that my time is running out, and I know that your time is running out, but one of the last things that I wanted to say was that it is better that the canary sings than the cells of justice cling. Thank you.
All right, the next person I have signed up is Bob Spitzen.
Members of the council, I spoke here about a month ago with my three minutes I obtained nothing. As how could my situation be put into context in said time? Now I will talk faster. I have effectively been, with all due respect to the females in this audience, raped by this Asheville city administration. This is no matter which is legally, morally, or, this is no matter what is legally, morally, or technically correct, largely, presumably, and almost certainly orchestrated by Attorney Martha McLaughlin and the new city attorney. I have been slandered, accused, mistreated, lied to, held prisoner by the acts of said government, and to what end? To keep me from my attempt at my or our civil and property rights, and have attempted in every civil manner, with every civil manner in action, to act the court in a fashion with what has occurred. What has happened, as I have thought, was utterly unthinkable by previous administrations. Quickly, I have been in touch with Bob Oston, Ohio, with my previous attorney, and with Mark Case, who had been brought into this after intervening, after many intervening years by a third party unbeknownst to myself. These three people would be most conversant in this issue, and I have attempted, and they have attempted to be helpful. Unfortunately, Mark was removed from the scene the next day by a ruptured appendix. A month later, on his return, we were in touch, but he then retired weeks later without having been engaged. The court seemed to be the only way out at great expense to ourselves and to the community. You should be representing. The issues are democracy, civil and property rights, access to public records, civility, honesty, and lis pendens, and legality of saying without any proof of service. With all due disgust, Bob Spitzen, I see the remainder of my time available to counsel or any member of the audience.
The next person I have signed up to speak is John Collectner. Not here? Okay. I could be saying that wrong? All right. And then the final person I have signed up to speak is Jeannie Rosenthal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I spoke in here before regarding the electronic cigarettes issue, and initially I had brought that issue to the council because Partnership Property Management had really gone big time in bringing electronic cigarettes into some of the low-income housing. And I fear, well, you know, since a part of that is through Asheville Housing Authority, I fear that y'all were the direct reporting to that, for Asheville Housing. It turns out apparently that you're not, that apparently Asheville Housing actually reports directly to HUD. But then I also knew that you oversee some buildings, including this building, and I know a couple of times after the six o'clock hour, there were a few times when I did experience a cigarette smoke in this building. And I'm only here for a short time. There's people here who work eight hours a day, five days a week. They need to be protected from this. And there's a lot of other properties, I guess, that you also have control over, the Asheville City Schools, the parks and recreation places, I guess the Senior Opportunity Center. So there is application to the city for this. I did pass, I did make some copies of a New York Times article where the, in New York Times, City Council, the New York City Council was considering the same question. And it's interesting, because some people can smell it, and some people can't. And this young man, he was sitting there, and you can read his words in here, where he experienced it, and he got up and talked about it. And, you know, he said how much it had given him a headache, and was burning his throat and everything. And even one of the city council persons said that they could see the smoke that was going on with some of these demonstrators with their electronic cigarettes, and he could see it, and he said he could smell it, but he didn't really know what to make of it. And then another city council person said, you know, regardless, we can't sit around and wait for more information to come in. We already know what kind of information we get from the tobacco companies, and, you know, they haven't told the truth in a lot of things. So in addition to the New York Times article, another thing that was of interest recently, you probably heard about the Florida lawsuit, where a woman whose husband died of lung cancer sued, and she was awarded apparently $23 billion, with a B, dollars. And of course, that doesn't mean that her husband would have made $23 billion in his lifetime, but it does mean that the jury is saying enough is enough. You can't do this to the American people anymore, because they're killing 400 million Americans every year, and another four, about another 400 million in Russia, and then the rest of the world. I mean, millions of people every year that they're killing, plus all the money that's being spent. Anyways, I thought it was real poetic justice that when I learned that this woman was a black woman, and her lawyers were black, and it's like, this is the last message of slavery in America. So it's really great to see that happen. And I do have much more, hopefully I'll have a chance to share in the future. I'd be happy to do a symposium at some point, because I've really researched a lot of this. I'd be willing, you know, for free to come and give half hour, hour, and be able to answer questions and stuff, because there really is a lot of information.
Thank you. All right, that's it for the folks that I have signed up to speak tonight. Is there anyone else wishing to provide public comment tonight? All right, with that, we have a closed session motion.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general statutes. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is NCGS Section 143-31810E. The statutory authorization is contained in NCGS Section 143-31811A1. And two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including a lawsuit involving the following parties, Roger Ailey and the city of Asheville. The statutory authorization is contained in NCGS Section 143-31811A3.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We will adjourn from the closed session.